We welcome everyone to this August 25th, 2025 meeting of the Corsicana State Board of Trustees. This is a record board meeting and all items that will be discussed at the end of the poster. While this is a meeting in public, it's not a meeting in other public. The board's role as a second government is approved personally. Our personnel budgets may cause for bad oversight. We're not here to manage or solve individual problems. Management is responsible for superintendenting, as a board we believe and we must. Educate your child about every child's greatest opportunity to learn. Maintain a safe and secure environment, mentally, physically, emotionally, and actively. These are core values. We appreciate your interest. Please do see us. We do the place of allegiance and we will have the teachers in the council. Lee, May, Sadie Grove, Olivia Heidman, Jill, Woodwills, Adette Rodriguez, Alex Pino.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the privilege of being in your presence one more time. Come to pray on behalf of this meeting and the school board. Now you have oversight of all of our school properties, teachers, staff, most importantly, our children, students, most important resource that we have. I pray that all of their work will be done as you grant them wisdom, integrity, and fiscal acuity. I pray that every decision made will be with the best interests and the welfare of our students. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Where are the ratings? Next thing is about the tax rate.
Good evening, everyone. Can you believe that we're in the third week of school already? Monday is Labor Day, so students and staff have a three-day weekend coming up. Our enrollment to the start of the year has been strong. We were projected to have 5,950 students this year by the firm contracted for the student enrollment for the bond, and we are already pushing that number at a total of 5,940. At Bowie Elementary, we have 497 students. At Carroll Elementary, 582 students. Fannin, 395. Navarro, 523. St. Houston, 417. Collins Intermediate, 893. CMS, 846. And CHS, 1787. I'm sure these numbers have changed. That's what today is, because that's Friday. But we are holding strong at 5,940 students. We've had a great start to the athletic season. Our volleyball and tennis teams are off to a fast start. And Cross Country will have its third meet already this week in Murleson. Football starts Friday at Cleveland, and don't forget, you can listen to the games again on the radio. So tune into The Ranch at 106.9. And you can still stream the game on YouTube, on the YouTube channel, Corsicana Tiger Football. If you have not heard, we have a new finishing team as well, and their season is set to start on September 20. We had our first meeting at the Golden Tigers last week, that is a 55 and up group, that we visited the football stadium and got to hear from Coach Rogers, Mr. Bowe, Coach Owen, and myself, and we are hope to grow this group moving forward. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 23rd at Carroll Elementary. And we've also had a number of bond presentations around the community. And our first public town hall meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on September 16th at CHS. We hope you will all join us for those informative sessions. Lastly, if you have not heard, the Penguin Project is back, and its next show has been announced. It will be Eliza Jr., set for mid-December at CHS, and we cannot wait.
Thank you, sir. Next is about the tax rate.
All right. Mr. Farmer, Board President, Ms. Harold, Board Members, thank you. We need to do the budget first, so skip ahead about page two of your workbook. The first page we will look at, this is your 199, this is your, our local and state budget. It includes athletics and stadium. You'll see the highlighted column for 2025, 2026. At the top, the first few rows, that's our revenue. Our total revenue expected this year is $65,410,926. So a couple things about the state revenue this year. We saw an increase. Obviously, you guys are familiar with the mandated raises, and they funded those mandated raises. And on a side note, after we met all of those requirements for funding those raises, we had an estimated about $191,000 left in revenue for discretionary spending. That line that has $39,000, the federal revenue, that's SHARs. So we anticipate making revenue and even making more than that. But most of it will go back due to a 2011 statewide audit, and all districts are paying back. So we kept that low. You'll expect a bunch of surplus there. So that's why there's that decrease. Below that, you have your expenditures grouped by function. Function 11, as you see, being the largest, that is instruction. So that is everything that involves classrooms, including payroll for teachers and the classroom paralegal professionals. You can see the increase there. Most of that is your mandated raises, so about $1.7 million worth of raises. I'm going to go through some of the increases on these functions, and then I'll take some questions. Function 12, solid increase. Librarian, it was a miscoding. That's not new money. They were in function 11 as a teacher last year. They moved over, and so that's where you're seeing some of that increase. But not new money. 21, that increase is due to a swap we did with Title I money. So there were some people in Title I that had to come out due to compliance, and they were put into our 199 budget. But then we moved the same amount of people out of our 199 back into Title I, so there was an even swap. They just came from a different function. So that is not new money that you're seeing there. 23, raises, but there were some cuts in non-payroll. So as you know, the raises for people that were not teachers was about 2%. So if you see in function 23, it's less than 2%. So that's not all raises. There were some cuts that offset some of that. See 31, function 31, counseling and evaluation. That is due to student placement services. But that, in this past year, was reimbursed, so that should be a wash. Function 34, transportation. So we don't have a truck or car payment, which was in function 71. We moved that money over to 34 in the bus purchase line, and we made sure that that line was available if needed after November, if we need to purchase buses out of that line. Function 41, general administration, due to just some 2% raise and then legal fees. Function 52, approved pay raises across the board for security that was done about a month ago, a couple weeks ago. Function 93 and 99 are just fixed cost raises. Can't do anything about it. Let's say, function 99, for example, is tax office expenses. And then if you look to the bottom, that is our projected deficit, $2,304,510. That's where we landed right now. If you remember, a few months ago, we were up in the 3.7 to $4 million range. So we've got it down to 2.3. That is due to a lot of collaboration with the people to the left and right of me and working with their staff. People being lean, attrition, cutting, non-payroll lines. It just kind of better management and looking at federal programs. Where can we bring in some of that and some of our 199? Well, I don't want to say it that way, but having federal programs assist more. So a lot of collaboration. So I do want to shout out to them for that. So that's the reason we've been able to get it down so much the last few months.
What, I guess, attendance percentage are you using in your base, your numbers on bond? Are you attending?
Yeah, it's a great question. So last year's average daily attendance was 5,340. Best practice is roll that forward, and that's what we did. And that is about a 92.5% attendance, which is about what we were last year.
So turning to get their kids to school every day, what can make more money?
Not just that, you know, like as we begin to see on the roles who are no-shows and getting those kids into the campuses, and I believe our campuses are starting to run those reports and see who they are now that things are kind of settled. Even since Friday, we've got additional, like 10 kids. So we've rolled the 559-50 mark for enrollment. Going, I mean, we're about where the demographic said we are. So hopefully in these next couple weeks, you'll bring in more kids. Any more questions on the budget from there?
I move that we approve the 2025-2026 MNO child nutrition debt service budget as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2025-26 MNO child nutrition and debt services budget as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion passes to approve the 25-26 MNO child nutrition and debt service budget as presented.
So now you go back to your tax rate on page 3 of the workbook. So the legislators changed up some things.
Can you go back to the budget real quick and just look at the 2025 debt service fund?
Yes.
Are you going to explain that?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. So the debt service fund will be paying our debt obligations plus the bond refunding, which we will get into. That total payment will dip slightly into INS fund balance, that is $7 million. It only dipped in about $100,000 projected. But even after looking at numbers and how much we've been getting in interest on our INS funds, it'll be a wash. It won't even dip in, and there'll be a surplus again this year to the INS fund balance. But that's just conservative budgeting right there. And I apologize if I hit on that a little bit more too, as we get to the tax rate stuff. Okay, so the tax rate. So the legislators added some new laws regarding language when adopting the tax rate. And so that resolution that you saw about the rate over the weekend is different than what we've had to do in the past. It's not just a simple motion to pass rates. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read this resolution for everyone to hear, and then I'm going to go back and explain the different parts and answer any questions about some confusion that is in there. So on this date, we, the Board of Trustees of the Corsicana School District, hereby levy or set the tax rate on $100 valuation for the district for the tax year 2026 at a total tax rate of .86200. To be assessed and collected by the duly specified assessor and collector as follows: .6669 for the purpose of maintenance and operations, and .19510 for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debts. Such taxes are to be assessed and collected by the tax officials designated by the district. This is all in bold and caps. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. Tax rate will effectively be raised by 2.8% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on $100,000 by approximately $0. Adopted this 25th day of August 2025 by the Board of Trustees. Okay, so this resolution was mandated by the state if your tax rate was going to bring in additional revenue. So even though our tax rate, so let's say that our MNO rate, .6669, and the INS rate, .19510, were the exact same as last year, and it did not go up. But they are bringing in more revenue because property values have gone up. And there's more properties. Right, right. So in the frequently asked questions and the guidance from TASBO, right, to help us with this, this was some of the language that the state of Texas says we have to have in there because we're bringing in more revenue. Now, why is it saying the tax rate will effectively be raised by 2.8%? The calculation on that was if you looked at the newspaper posting, under the rate that we're going to adopt, right? Under there, there's something called the rate to maintain, and there's lower tax rates there. That is the tax rate. Assuming nothing changed and we wanted the same exact revenue from last year, that's what that tax rate would bring in. We don't adopt that MNO rate because... Let's recap how we get our tax rate for maintenance and operations. The county sends us their property values. We get into TDA, which is TDA's secure portal. We take those property grades. We plug it in. They tell us to hit a button that says calculate, and it spits out our maintenance and operations tax rate. And then we're entitled to five pennies, and so that's where we get our tax rate. It has nothing to do with what we do in any tablet, spreadsheet, or what Region 12 does. It's purely based on what TDA gives us, and that's the rate we adopt. And it is higher than the rate to maintain in that newspaper posting. So they said if your tax rate is higher than the rate to maintain, then you must have that second sentence that has all those capital letters. And also, they specify the font must be larger than everything else on that piece of paper. And so that's where that percentage comes from, is that it's a 2.8% increase on that rate to maintain. The tax rate that we never had, but they still want us to do that calculation. The $0 was very confusing to me as well. So I called Region 12, and we went through the same guidance we've been getting from TASBO and everywhere else. And I said, this does not make sense. But the calculation is proposed rate and then minus the prior year's rate, and all that times $100,000 and all that. So you're using the same tax rate from last year and the same one from this year. The difference is going to be zero. And so I read that to Region 12. They agreed. They've seen other districts are saying the same things. Is it confusing? Yes. Does it make sense? Not really. But I think that's what it is. And so, yeah, like I quadratured and checked that because it was just odd. But ultimately, our tax rates stay the same. Our INS rate stays the same because we have an obligation to pay off bonds. We're doing a bond refund, which I'll go to next on that action item. So what, any questions on that?
So our rate is not changing. It's staying exactly the same as it was last year. The only difference now for our tax base is there's more houses and more money that will be coming in through property tax.
Right, right. But they also, you know, some of that was offset by the $140,000 exemption that wasn't included as well.
So, yeah, we will, yeah. Because there's $100,000 in the pension. Now it's $140,000.
So very confusing stuff. Learned a lot about that, but that's... So what the action item and the language is adopting in this resolution? I'll need some signatures after that, and then also I could give a motion stating the rates. Any other questions?
I move to adopt the resolution for the set tax rate. It's taken Corsicana State to adopt a major tax rate of 0.66690 and a secondary rate of 0.19510 for a total of 0.862006.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to set the MNO tax rate at .66690 and the INS rate of .19510. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion passes to approve the resolution to set the MNO tax rate at .66690 and the INS rate at 0.19510. The next is a refund.
Correct. Great. So last year, if you remember, we did a defeasance. It's kind of a way of paying off some of the borrowed bond debt as well and saving money at the same time. This is a similar process. The legislators changed up some things this year. And so this is the route that districts are going instead of using a defeasance. So we are authorizing the issue on Corsicana Department of Defense, unlimited tax refunding bond, Series 2025. What does that mean? It means that for the district, we're able to accelerate a $2 million principal payment from February 2034 to February 2026. And we'll be saving at those years' interest payments, which total over $400,000. So we'll be saving the district $400,000 on the INS side. So basically, we kind of sped up the payment. And that's where we're at. That's part of that INS rate, and it's going to go out this year.
I move to order authorizing the issues.
We have a motion and a second to adopt and order authorize the issue to sell Corsicana Department of Defense debt tax refund bond, Series 2025. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes to adopt and order authorize the issue of the sale of Corsicana Department of Defense bond, any tax refund bond, Series 2025.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The team here and Mark from this year. Jeremy back there, he lives in spreadsheets and valuable resource right there. So anyway, really great team I've had for this year, but thank you.
Thank all of you. Good job. Good evening.
Good evening, President Farmer, Ms. Harold, members of the board. We need to update our EFB local policy to be in compliance with Senate Bill 13. So you have the proposed policy in front of you. I'm just going to highlight the key changes from our current policy. Other than just verbiage, there are a few things that are big differences. So before new library materials can be added to our catalog, they have to undergo a process. The first step is they have to be posted publicly for 30 days with the opportunity for a parent to submit a challenge. After they've been on the website or posted publicly for 30 days, they then have to be board approved. Once those two things happen, then we can order new library materials, essentially books, to go with our circulation. This also applies to donated things as well. So if somebody was to donate a large box of books to a library, it has to undergo those two steps. Again, that is, that's Speaker 13, that is law. So basically, saying that the library is going to recommend the books, and then the board is ultimately going to approve. The other thing that's a big difference from our current policy is that if a title is challenged, that book must be removed for all students during the challenge process, and that includes teacher libraries. Our career-based policy only required they can remove it from the student, the parent that was challenging it, but now you have to remove it for everybody until it's gone through the process. But of course, we're going to encourage, well, the policy will state that parents and adults are encouraged to solve library material challenges informally first before it gets to that formalized process. And then if a challenge does exist, if the parent does choose that through the informal process they're still not satisfied and they want to move forward with the formal challenge, then it would be up to the board to review that challenge and respond. And then the last major change to this policy is that parents must have access to see the child's book and check out history. And we're working with Fall Ed. They have those capabilities, so it's just getting all of that enabled from the backend. Any questions?
What are we going to post, I guess, the list of new...
Our website.
Yeah, I guess a new tab.
Under curriculum page, we'll have a library media tab. I'm going to follow that information later. I've been working with the conversation.
I have a question as well. On page 17, it has a yellow link.
I noticed that... The board. That's the board. I'm not sure why it's a link there, but you guys would have to report. So you guys would have to appoint the challenge committee if that was to come up. You would just say, "I approve the page option."
Any other questions?
I move that we approve EFB local as presented.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the TSE local policy. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes as presented.
Thank you.
The next thing is a nominee for Navarro County Senator President.
We need to submit a nominee for the Navarro Central appraisal district board of directors to fulfill Mike Fletcher's term for December 2025.
I move that we nominate Brad Farmer for a position of Navarro County Central appraisal district board director to fulfill Vegas' conspiracy.
We have a motion and a second to prove that we nominate Brad Farmer for a position of Navarro County Senator President and Board of Directors to fulfill Vegas' conspiracy. December 31st of 2025. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes to approve the nomination. Motion passes to approve the nomination for Brad Farmer for a position of American Assistant President of the Board of Directors to fulfill Vegas' expired December thirty first of two thousand twenty five.
Do you think, Dr. Palmer?
Good evening, Ms. Howell, Mr. Farmer, just to make sure. I wanted to go ahead and present to you tonight the dates for credit by exam. There are six dates that we have that we're working with this year, sorry, seven. And these dates are pretty much in line with where we, when we give college board exams, these are the dates that we pretty much wanna make sure that we hit. So these are the ones that we're making sure are in line with the college board results. So you, you have those dates in front of you. August twenty fourth, October fifth, November second, December seventh, March eighth, May Sorry. That is correct. And you were correct. They are, they are, yes, yes, they were four dates this year. Yes. So they are August twenty third, September thirteenth, October fifth, November second, December sixth, March fourteenth, May second, and June sixth. I was looking at my notes and I had topped the, the previous ones and then the new ones. Yes, you are correct.
Any question?
I move to approve those dates.
We have a motion to second to approve the dates as proposed. If we are credited by, do you say? All those, the favors say aye. All those, the opposed say no. Motion passes as presented.
Thank you.
Next thing, the task pause every day.
We have the first reading of tasking policy of date one twenty five. So if you will turn to B D A A, it's our local policy. And just remember, anything in red will be deleted text, anything in blue is new text. The main thing on B D A A, the board shall elect a president, a vice president, and a secretary who shall be members of the board. Officers shall be elected by majority vote of the members present and, present and voting. And then if you look at term and duties, board officers shall serve, shall serve for a term of one year, which if you see in the red, they both say one year, but of one year or until your successor is elected. And then under president, under number two, have the, the president, in addition to the duties required by law, the president of the board shall have the right to discuss, make motions, and propose resolutions and vote on all matters coming before the board. So that would be all the changes on that. And then if you just turn the page to B D B, board internal organizations, so this is all about board committees. The main things that are changing under board committees is that, are that composed only of current board members. Formation of board committees shall be led by board action, shall be by board action when establishing a board committee. So the number of board members on that committee, the process to appoint the board members to that committee, the term of the committee, and the responsibilities of that committee. So a board committee shall be fact-finding, delivering, and advisory, but not administrative. And then their special committee, or shall make recommendations in the areas of responsibility. And board committees will report their findings and recommendations to the board and assume, and not assume administrative duties. And if you go down to transacting business, unless specified by the board, a board committee shall not have the final decision-making authority. The board committee has recommendations that will be reported to the board, which is. And then if you'll move to B D F, it's just a part of what we just read from B D B on committees composed of others. And then if you will go to E I, academic achievement under partial credit, it'll just change the verbiage to from, when a student earns a passing grade, only half of a course and the average of both halves is lower than seven, the district shall award the student credit for the half with the passing grade. So it'll change from combined grade to the average of grades. And then F D E, local admissions, school safety transfers. The one thing that it will be changing under number two, there's a list of school-related, if you're a student who becomes a victim of one of the following, and they're adding ruling to that list of things, those school-related activities. And that would be all of the changes.
I think this, this is the agenda.
Well, we can forward this back in September to per this, in September, so this is just the first reading. If you have any questions between now and September four, just let me know.
We need a further consent. Okay, I need a motion for consent agenda.
Need a motion for consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. All those, the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those, the opposed say no. Motion passes, consent agenda is approved. Move now as urgent to close session. As permitted by this agenda code, bye bye, motion for board vote. Thank you.